Okay, let's start with the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First thing on our agenda this evening is an appointment, creation of an emergency management advisory committee. Fire Chief Joe Mercieri. Joe, you gonna lead us into this a little bit?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a slight correction. On the letter I sent to the board regarding this committee, it's a request to form an emergency medical service advisory committee and not an emergency management advisory committee as reflected in our agenda.
Thank you.
So basically what I'm asking is for the board to consider the creation of a committee. The committee's purpose would be to act as an advisory body to the board's selectmen. The committee would be charged with the responsibility to evaluate emergency medical service proposals and choose a proposal that would best serve the residents of our community. As you are aware, we served a 90-day termination notice by Calix Ambulance. And since then, we've taken some initiatives, one of which was to advertise an RFP to try to acquire prices and possibly new service providers. And in doing so, once we start getting these bids in, I would like to see if we can form a committee in order to review the bids and address them, interview the prospective contractors or service providers, and then select one and move on from there.
Okay. We've got the material you sent. We've studied it. It will actually require a vote, so we will defer that to the end of the meeting so that if there is public comment, we can hear that before we vote.
Sure.
But anybody have any questions, Joe? That'd be a good time to ask them.
I have a question about the timing. Your letter says on the 21st at least, we have 41 days before they terminate service.
Yeah.
It seems like a short timeframe to get a committee together, decide a direction, all this stuff. Do we have a short-term solution for what we're filling in between?
You want to address that?
One Calix has offered.
Yeah, Calix has offered to extend their time.
At the new rate?
I can't answer for that. I'm not sure.
We're still talking. And that's one of the options that the commission would, or committee would review is a negotiated agreement with Calix as a potential outcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have a... The letter speaks to perhaps looking at a development internally of fire rescue operation within our own department. I sat on the Calix board for a couple of years, and that market is almost out of control. And what I'm talking about is small ambulance services in rural areas nationwide that if they don't have enough transports, because transports is where they make their money. They don't make their money on emergencies. They're just facing a very dire situation. And if you may have noticed, I think it was in the weekend, Newport experienced exactly the same thing we just experienced, 100% increase. And they all vie for hospitals to contract with them directly so they can do all of their transports. Transports require certain staffing levels depending on the patient's problems. And it's my impression after two years of sitting on the committee, and the Calix ambulance service is a well-run service, but the market that they're in is a very tough market. And I would hope that this committee would also explore the possibility of picking up fire rescue internally, because you can spread your staff in a different way.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we're into the town manager's report.
Okay. First up, I have a request to create a cultural arts commission. Littleton has a strong and growing cultural arts components but lacks a coordinated approach to preserve and sustain and grow this important component of the community. Chapter five in Littleton's master plan highlights the need to recognize both historical and cultural assets. Littleton has 58 that were highlighted back in 2013, and that includes, continues to grow. The creation of a commission would also contribute to the coordination, planning, and promoting of ongoing and future arts and cultural activities. Economic development is shown to be enhanced by concentrating creative economy components and recognition of Littleton's cultural and arts assets through marketing can attract a strong workforce, successful firms, and sustain a positive quality of life. The comprehensive economic development strategy plan calls for and recognizes the importance of culture and arts as an integral part of the region's economy and future, as well as the regional plan that North Country Council puts out in their 10-year regional plan. So basically, the creation of this commission would enable arts and culture to have a seat at the table for development projects, for ongoing maintenance and care of arts and culture in the community.
Okay. There is something else that we need to go around, so we'll postpone action on that to the board action section. Next.
All right. Next, we have Mill Street. Just to give you a quick background on where we are at with Mill Street, in mid-July, construction started on the street. We engaged in restricting parking to help with some of the safety concerns that we had with the size of vehicles and visibility and turning radiuses. In early October, we received a complaint from the Human Rights Commission, the Governor's Human Rights Commission, on an ADA complaint of discrimination, Baylog versus the town of Littleton. In mid-October, we saw the changing patterns of construction and held a stakeholders' meeting to go over what the next phase of Mill Street parking would be and to also just begin to talk about some of the more long-term, long-range solutions that are going to be presented during our transportation alternative grant project. While we were doing that, I did a bit further research and found that parking on Mill Street had never officially been created.
Right.
It was just there. And in fact, the traffic ordinance prohibited left-wheel-to-curb parking. So in early November, we removed the concrete blocks, and I began taking a look at the traffic ordinance to see what would need to be done in order to create parking on Mill Street. In order to create parking on Mill Street, section seven, Article seven, I think section three, would need to be amended to allow for left-wheel-to-curb parking on one-way streets. Also, another consideration, legal councils advised us that if we do create official parking spaces, we'll need to have ADA requirements met. And I'd need to do a little more research to see all of the requirements. One other consideration is the amount of parking that would be on Mill Street, approximately 10 spots, would represent about 2.5% of the public parking in town. And what I would be looking for right now is just direction from the board if we wanted to continue with the no parking as it is, or if we would like to pursue an ordinance change to allow parking. Also, keep in mind, anything we do there is likely going to be revisited in 20, this coming year, 2018, for a 2019 project under the transportation alternative program.
Okay. That again is something we have to vote on, so we'll postpone that to the board action section of the meeting. Next. School Street parking?
School Street. We recently posted signs. I don't know if Joe wants to give a quick update of what's actually, the conditions of school street parking condition?
Last fall, the traffic committee, Chief Joe, Chief Paul, and myself, the select board, we decided not to have any parking on it. School Street on the right-hand side, actually coming down the school, from the school towards the center of town, I don't remember, everybody remembers that in August last fall. We have a hard time plowing that road in the wintertime when a bus is coming down the hill during slippery conditions, and we're trying to get up the hill, and there's only one lane with the cars there. After the board voted on it, I did not install the parking signs. I let it go the whole winter. Sometimes a little inaction is good, and I just went the whole winter to see just how bad it really was. And we determined that we really did have to do this. You guys acted on it last fall. The traffic committee agreed with me last fall. I exercised some inaction, which is actually an action, just to see, to look at it closer. So we posted it last week. The signs weren't quite right. We tweaked them today. There's no parking there on school street Monday through Friday till 4:00 in the afternoon. There is parking on weekends, especially for the churches, for the businesses in downtown. They can, they're busy on the weekends, and there is parking there then. It's aimed, basically, the spirit of the whole action is aimed at allowing buses to come down school street unimpeded. If they have to hit the brakes, they can't go into a slide, we can't plow that road and work simultaneously with a school bus. That's the spirit of the action. I think that was the case with Chief Joe and Chief Smith, and it's me and Costin. That's where we're at, really.
Yeah. One of the things that we are doing right now, we're working with North Country Council for a federal highway grant to study parking townwide and to come up with solutions. There'll probably be some low-hanging fruit. One of the things that has initially been suggested is taking a look at some of these roads to see if they could be, if some of them could be made one-way to allow for year-round parking on those roads. But we'll have something to you later. And we are getting a number of complaints about the parking restrictions, but I think that the schedule has alleviated some of that.
This doesn't require any action?
No action yet. Just keep everybody informed.
Something to consider for next summer, you know, we bag the parking meters at certain points. Once school is out in June, and there won't be any buses running until late August, a couple people have recommended that we consider bagging those signs during the summer, if that's possible. Negative to that is that people get used to parking there again, and so... But because it's clearly an improvement for school street coming down during the wintertime, or during any time for that matter, but you know, given the accommodations that people may be looking for when the buses aren't running, it's just something to consider.
To your point, though, we changed the signs today. I believe they read November 1st to April. It's consistent with the snow parking plan for Main Street as well, so you're spot-on. There's no reason right now in my mind, or the traffic committee's mind, to restrict it in the good weather. It's just winter weather only, and it's on the weekends. That's good. It's not after 4:00. Trying to go as easy as we can there and keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Transfer station.
Okay. So transfer station. Brian Patno was taking a look at resident usage and also the demand for a lot of the work that has to be done behind the scenes to prepare all the recycling and solid waste. And he's come up with a new schedule. So the schedule was presented here. The change is going to take place on Wednesdays. The summer hours will no longer go to 6:00 p.m. They're going to stay 12 to 4:00 as they are in the winter. And then also on Fridays, the hours are going to be shifted. They're going to go from 12 to 4:00 during the winter and then be open to 6:00 p.m. during the summer. And nothing else will change. And...
That again is something we have to go around, and we'll hold that off to the board action section of the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you've got thoughts or questions now?
No.
HB 324.
So HB 324, if you remember earlier, the board was presented with the potential consequences. If HB 324 passed, this was the bill that would allow or disallow towns from assessing utilities. Based on Littleton's 2016 valuations, the tax rate would have risen by $5 per thousand if the bill passed. An amendment has been added to the bill, and the bill has now been moved out of committee. The bill was amended to create a study commission to study utility property valuation. There'll be nine members on it. I think that it's something that we still have to pay a lot of attention to. We've been well-represented by our state representatives who really spearheaded an education campaign of the public and the representatives on the commission, writing letters to the editor and calling and meeting with the representatives to talk about the unforeseen impact. So the study commission of the nine members, there will be a member that represents the utilities' interests. There'll be a member from the DRA. There will be, I believe, two state legislators and one municipal, among others. So it's still a committee that could swing a way that we don't want it to, so I think we just need to all stay aware of that.
Members of that commission have not been named yet.
I'm not aware of that yet. I'll have to check into it. I don't believe so.
There's no action on our part at this point in time.
That's correct.
And thank you for attending that and representing ourselves and other towns. So do you have anything else under your town manager's report that's not here?
I have nothing else.
Okay. We're into old business, and we've got a public works winner in climate weather policy. We have the detail in our packet. I suspect now, if you want to ask Andrew or Joe questions about any of that, we can.
I have a number of recommendations based on historical information in here. The director of public works is the director of public works, not the supervisor of public works. There are 13 references to the title, which is incorrect. And so on various pages, we used to have a director, we used to have a supervisor of public works. I think that went back six years. So that changed in terms of the title. On page three, under maintenance, the buildings up at the high school have changed names in certain respects because three schools have come together under one building. So there is no longer a vocational school. And so my recommendation is, and I'll give this to Seal to change if you're going to change it, is the Littleton Highway Department is responsible for clearing of snow and winter treatment of the roads and sidewalks, leading to the career, the Gallon Career and Technical Center, Littleton High School, Daisy Bronson Middle School, and, I'm sorry, as a complex. So it's one building, and it's containing three different programs. The old Daisy Bronson Middle School is now called the Littleton Academy at 96 High Street. The complex, going back to the complex, it's 159 Oak Hill Avenue, and then there's Lakeway Elementary School, which is still the same. So as we all know, Bronson is part of the high school building, and so is the CTC Center. And so it should be referred to as one building, maybe using the word "complex," and citing the addresses, because there's a little bit of confusion there regarding what we're talking about. I had a question, Joe, about page four, power route priorities. The hospital's not listed. Has it ever been listed?
No. This is a, I took the, this is a, become one of the policy we've had in the last few years. I cleaned up a little bit, obviously not quite enough, and changed some of, relisted some of the vehicles. Some of them are out of service as a new vehicle, added things like that, but nothing, there were no significant changes, edits in any way.
Well, hospital's a state road.
Well, I was going to say, the hospital where it sits now is on a state of order, and it was on a state of order when it was on Crowder Street as well. So maybe under, roads not receiving winter maintenance, if you wanted to, you could make reference to it or not. Those are really the only changes I thought.
Would you recommend we hold this off to board action, or do we rewrite it?
Rewrite it and bring it back if we can at our next meeting. Can we do that?
Unless you want to approve it with those changes included, then we'll just have it available.
Okay. That's fine.
I think that's what we should do. Snow's flying.
Let's do that. Next, we have, at Old Business, we have an additional appointment to the Littleton Dog Park Committee. Penny Zach McKinnon apparently has expressed an interest, I've got an email or something here someplace. Thank you. If Mel or Franco has any comment, we can hear it now, otherwise we'll vote on that in board action also.
Okay.
And that takes us to Old Business, which is, we've got a couple items on it, the first of which is the LIDC land transfer situation. We've had several public input sessions, but in the last go-around, the two that were We've also had verbal and written communication to the select board threatening a lawsuit. And one of the grounds of the lawsuit is my alleged conflict of interest. I don't believe I have a conflict of interest, but in the interest of the town that elected me, I am going to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on the subject. I will run the meeting as chair to bang the gavel if I have to between Mel and Franco as they discuss and vote on the matter. Gentlemen, I leave it up to you.
Well, I reviewed the minutes of nine select board and planning board public hearings on these two parcels, TaxMAP 99 Lot 17 and 99 Lot 46. I also reviewed the minutes of the December 20th, 2016 Planning Board public hearing regarding the reclassification of the parcel designated as TaxMAP 102 Lot 7, from rural to industrial. My estimation, that parcel is what lies at the core of the movement to block any further conveyances between the town and LIDC in this geographic sector of the park. As a municipal official with some understanding of highly competitive business search market of the highly competitive business search market, I find the concerns regarding selling 9946 for $1 as reflecting a serious misunderstanding of this national market and the difficulty inherent in securing a company's commitment to locate in a very rural area on undeveloped land rather than remaining in or located near more urban settings where a wider choice of parcel development may be available. Moreover, to suggest, as was done at recent hearings, that Littleton voters were ignorant of or unaware of such low-value sales, I would just refer back to Article 9 on the 1999 warrant that authorized the conveyance to LIDC of parcels of land for nominal consideration. If you look at Webster, the word "nominal" has within it the definition, the word trifling. And trifling is defined as a very small importance value or amount. There were 1,106 votes to that article, 887 of which, or 80%, were yes votes. To suggest voter ignorance regarding the intended selling price of this conveyance without supporting data to the contrary is just unfounded. Finally, as an elected municipal official, I feel I am, unless otherwise convinced, obligated to represent the overwhelming majority of voters supporting the passage of warrant articles appearing on past warrants. In 1969, it was 60% in the affirmative. In 1974, it was 79%. In 1997, it was 95%. In 1999, it was 80%. And in 2014, it was 86%. And these warrants had to do with industrial park securement, development, or expansion. So that's my position in terms of wanting to move ahead and pass a motion approving the sale for whatever nominal amount we come to.
Well, I made some notes. I don't have completely written out responses like you have, but I have made some notes addressing what I perceived as the concerns that have been brought up. I agree that the argument that the original, that the vote to sell this property or convey the property, or however you want to term it, and to say that the people were ignorant about it, I just don't buy it. I don't think, I think, I think most people knew, maybe not everybody, but most people knew based on history what had gone on. Another argument I've heard from people is that the property's not developable. I think that they're running fast and loose with comments that were made. There's a significant difference between not developable and challenges to develop. I think that LIDC has already taken those challenges into consideration with their desire to acquire the property. There were other uses brought up for the lots. Unfortunately, recognizing that I believe we need to continue to expand our industrial base to help alleviate residential tax burden, it only makes sense to expand that industrial base where there's already an industrial park. Another argument I heard more than once was that we already have too many jobs. I don't know how to argue against that. That's just, I've never heard anything like that before. I don't know how to argue it. All I can say is it doesn't make any sense to me. Another common argument is that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town, and the logic being that that fiduciary responsibility, selling the property for $1 does not meet that fiduciary responsibility. I couldn't disagree more with that comment as well. In fact, I think that most irresponsible thing you could do was, would be to sell that to an entity, an individual or an entity that doesn't produce the tax revenues that we get from industrial park lots. And I think previous sales support that argument. I don't think there's any, I just don't think there's a viable argument there. It'd be, I think even if that property doesn't get developed for a decade, it would still produce more revenue than if we, than if it was sold to an individual or not used for development, which would maybe garner a few hundred dollars a year, because likely it would get into current use, and it would, there'd be very, a little financial benefit to the town for that. So I think the industrial park needs are, in fact, getting into the industrial park So I think the industrial park needs are in fact, getting it to the industrial park and selling it for a dollar. In fact, selling it for more than a dollar creates hurdles to the development of the property, which doesn't make any sense to me. If we want it, if we, if I believe it should be industrial property, then putting, creating hurdles to making it industrial doesn't make any sense to me. And that dollar sale has been proven to be successful in the past. I don't see why it would be any different now. So that brings me to my last item, unfortunately, is the whole lawsuit threat that you alluded to. I can't be more for, more in favor, and I, and I want to make sure it's on record that I am absolutely in favor of this transfer to LIDC of this property. However, under the circumstances, now I'm sitting here facing what's in the best interest of the community. We're gonna have a lawsuit. I think we're, I, you know, attorney Reamer's letter had some plausible arguments, but I don't think they're insurmountable. I don't think there's any reason to believe we wouldn't necessarily win that lawsuit. But even if we win, it's gonna end up spending a lot of money and it's gonna delay the whole process even further. So although I'm in favor of doing this, I feel like it's really in the best interest of the community to let it go to town meeting again and let the people vote on it. It's been overwhelming in the past. If it's not, if it doesn't pass, then I guess the town didn't really want it. So that's my position and it has only to do with that lawsuit and what it's gonna cost to defend it and get this thing done. That will end up being settled in a year, maybe, maybe more, I don't know, when we may be able to get this thing settled right at town meeting with new warrant articles.
Again, I think the parcel that's driving this is not the parcel we're talking about tonight. But I understand that. And I know some people have commented on the size of some of the newer buildings in the, in the industrial park and worrying about something like that sitting on one oh two point seven. If we take it to town meeting, we have to take it to deliberative session. If we take it to deliberative session, there could be a motion from the floor to raise the price to eighty thousand dollars. So, you know, that's where our risk comes in. Clearly, as in the past, we've had deliberative sessions that were as crowded as this room has gotten tonight. So there'll be a lot of, there could be a lot of people there. But the risk we run is that the price could change from a dollar up to whatever the price could go. And if that was voted in, then that's what would be on the warrant. And clearly, LIDC wouldn't, I don't think, be able to afford, even using Bruce's recommendation of, they could owe it to us and collect it, you know, when the, when the parcel sells. Then businesses looking to move are looking for, for breaks, you know, to open their, their business. So, but that's, that's the only risk we run. I, I'm as sympathetic or sensitive to this issue of being sued as, as you are. It's, I guess what just bothers me is that we're not dealing with the parcel that really we should be dealing with. So, but that's, it is what it is.
Well, as far as that lawsuit is concerned, the, the other part that bothers me about that is, the last thing I want to do is send a message that every time someone doesn't agree with the answer, they can file a lawsuit and it's gonna make the selectmen flip on it. I, I don't feel that. I, I'm Johnny come lately to this whole thing. I understand that. But it is what it is now. And I think we're just gonna do a better job putting the warrant articles together, a better job selling the, the reasons for it. I don't even have to do a better job of that. The vote was overwhelming already. I, I think it's likely to be, again, I understand the risk we run with that dollar amount. I may walk away really disappointed and disillusioned, but I just can't see us spending that kind of money to defend something that, it's gonna happen a few years down the road anyways. And I think there's, I think there's a, there's support for it in the community as a whole.
It's my understanding, if I remember council's recommendations to us, that we only need a majority vote there, not a, not a super majority. Even though there's been petitions, this is a different kind of transaction. It doesn't involve changing from rural to something else. It's, it's just.
We asked that question specifically and the answer was it's not a zoning issue, therefore it's only a simple majority.
Right, okay.
Having heard some good points and arguments from both, what I need to do to move forward is a motion, a second, and a vote.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess we gotta make, I'm not sure how this work, we have to, I, I make a motion that we go forward with the transfer of the property to LIDC. And then we get a vote on it afterwards. Or can I, can I make a motion on the opposite?
You can make a motion for anything you want.
Make a motion to put it on the warrant.
That's right. Okay, then I, then that's what I'll do. I will make a motion that we, that we delay the transfer of the property to LIDC and that we put the warrant article or articles as necessary for the transfer of the property as well as the transfer of the right of way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's two to nothing. The next thing under old business is the Ledgeway Road Acceptance. Kind of wait a second and let the people that want to leave, leave. Ledgway Road Acceptance, we've run into another snag with some, believe it or not, different legal opinions. And we're gonna have to put that on hold till somebody makes up their mind exactly how we're supposed to proceed.
What, what's the question? I mean, can we just talk about?
The procedure for, you know, the multi-step procedure, we're getting different scenarios now. Actually, from the same law firm, we're getting different.
Right. So this is a betterment road?
No, it's not an attorney joke.
Oh, it could be though. Yeah, there's a betterment road assessment process, but then there's also the laying out of the road process. And so where the two convene requires a second look. And that's what we're gonna come back with.
Android sealed and back and forth trying to get answers and we just don't have one fast enough.
Who does the second look?
Our attorneys are gonna, going to go over with us to make sure we're all satisfied with requirements. We've, we've done the work on the road.
We thought we were ready to.
It's all satisfactory, all parties.
So the road is up to, to our standards.
Yeah, I think so pretty much.
It needs a second look.
Not the road itself, just the process.
Oh, just the pro, oh, I see.
I think there's another notification process and, you know, some recording at the town.
Well, we're not going anyplace with that tonight. Stay tuned. Under new business, we have holiday Main Street parking meters bag from December sixteenth to January second. We need to vote on that, so again, I'll hold that off to board action in, in the event that there's some public comment on it. Okay, now we're into public comment. There being none, oh, Bruce.
I don't think I need to take that from you. You want to speak to me, you speak to me in a civil manner. Excuse me, as being chairman of the board. Excuse me, okay, I'm just telling you. My question is, on the basis of what I'm hearing, what has happened, and I'm not sure you people are aware of it, but the Littleton, a few years ago, the town in turn, a group of people recommended that through the parks department, that the parks department should be plowing the snow on the high school. Last year, the town got reimbursed through the highway department and the parks department roughly twenty-two thousand dollars. Prior to that, it was put out to bid and it was costing a minimum of thirty-five thousand dollars. It was very well done on what was happening on the basis of how it was operated with the parks department. They actually went out and bought a bigger truck so that they could do the plowing as well as they could turn around and maybe use the truck in the summertime, not in that part. What I'm getting at is it has not been done properly since the, the parks department has suddenly been taken over by the town manager's position in here. And suddenly, they got a bid, they got bids up there for forty to sixty thousand dollars to do the snowplowing. No consideration was taken on the basis of hiring somebody to do the snowplowing on it through the parks department. I don't think you people are aware of it, but I do think that it is aware of it through the town manager's position. And consequently, consequently, this is a very, this is gonna cost our community a lot. Now, I understand from what I gather, they're not gonna sign the contract with them. They're gonna do it on an individual basis on the thing on it, per storm. But the fact is, it was working slick as a whistle on the thing on it, with the parks department and hiring somebody that would do the, the plowing. And as a result of, and I use you as an, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I am, because of the fact that you didn't hire the right people within your plowing operation out of the thing on it. And it's gonna cost us anywhere from twenty-five to forty thousand dollars more. And consequently, there's something wrong with what you're doing when it was working very, very well before out of the thing on it and saving the town a lot of money. So I'm looking for some answers and what can you do about it?
So I'll just address some of that. One, there's been a few factors that play into that and joking correctly or add more detail if he has anything to add. But one of the things that happened was there was a position at the school that was eliminated that actually used to assist the town with snow removal. That position was eliminated and it required additional strain on our staff. The other thing is we, we've ourselves undergone a number of staffing changes and have also been shorthanded due to health issues and unfilled positions that required basically us to then change our priorities and almost meet an unmeatable goal of being able to do, because you have to do the schools and a priority. And we have a number of other priority roads and routes that have to be done at the same time. We, and we're, we're underpowered for that. Another thing is the school, like you said, was reimbursing us for about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. I think that's, you know, plus or minus a couple thousand bucks. It might be, it might have been eighteen thousand last year. But if you look at.
They asked me to.
Yeah, that could be accurate. And then so then if you look at the bids that actually have come in, they're actually ranging from forty to eighty thousand dollars. And so the forty thousand dollar one is if, I believe that if the school provides its own person, I believe, or the, or provides its own truck, it's one or the other. And the eighty thousand is to take care of it all. What that tells me is that the town was grossly underestimating its reimbursement amount for the school and may have in fact been subsidizing the school greatly in its snow removal. Part of that is that we would be reimbursed specifically for the hours of the person involved. And then there was no reimbursement or consideration for the equipment used and the, the equipment cost for upkeep and maintenance. We also, and one other factor is the vehicle that we have right now that we would use for that is in really, well, it was in really poor condition. We've got it right now where we can keep it going for the rest of the year, but we needed to take care of the town's assets first, the town lots. This is something that we're gonna continue to look at and work at with the school. We're working on an MOU, for example, with the library. The school is a separate entity, but Stephen, Nylas and I have been in ongoing discussions about how we can collaborate and this will be something that we look at as we go forward with enough staff, the right kind of equipment and the right kind of arrangement that, that equally looks at, you know, in an equal way, how the town is reimbursed for the services that we provide. And if, if the school need, you know, needs to, like for example, if we get to a discussion where they can add that staff person back to assist us, you know, and maybe there's a higher contribution for the, for the vehicle, those sort of things, we'll have to work out all those details. But right now, we're not in a position to be able to do that this year with all those factors involved. I don't know if Joe has anything to add.
I'm, I'm very critical of the fact that here we are in the summer first and suddenly this is coming to a.
So they were notified back in August of this? And we tried to notify them with enough time so they could make arrangements needed?
All I'm saying is, it's, you wrote a letter to the, wanting to take over the parks department. And I saw a copy.
So that has nothing to do with it?
And the fact is, you have a responsibility to be able to try to do this. And what I'm trying to say is, suddenly, we're in a real dilemma, at a very, very expensive situation out of it. I don't know that you can do much, but on the other hand, I'm looking at it that somebody's made a terrible mistake here because it was working very, very well before. And I do think it, you've got a, you've got a real expense that's gonna cost us an awful lot of money. And I hope that you would tackle the thing next year in a proper man because you certainly didn't do it this year.
Appreciate your support. Joe's got a little bit of.
Working really well on Bruce. The MOU was with parks, that's right. It was, it was broken with parks last, last year on Thanksgiving evening. With no notice whatsoever to the school department. We, I went up to the school on the first snow event, which would be the following, the Monday after Thanksgiving, like today was, you know, after the past Thanksgiving. They had an ice event going on. They had nobody there to take care of their lots. So I, I don't have a sander on my truck. Every truck we have that has a sander on it has a dedicated route. So I went and found the parks truck, thawed it out. It was caked in ice. We had a pretty good ice storm. Got the, got the plow truck thawed out and went and did that job myself. The school always supplied a second person to parks. They took that guy away. So the school took a guy away, then parks broke the MOU. And I didn't think it was a good look for the town. And against a lot of people's advice, I went and did it. I did it for all of December, all of January into February. At no cost to the town. I'm a salary employee. I came in early. None of the other guys that have assigned routes had to deviate from their route at all to cause any issues anywhere around town with safety and, and snow removal. I did the whole thing myself with no help from the school after we always had help from the school. The truck is a two thousand and eleven, beat to heck. I fixed it up as much as I can and it's, and it's running good now. The sander is in its third motor. It wasn't maintained right. So yeah, parks had, parks, it was working good with parks. I, I don't know on the outside looking in, but it wasn't working really. And this was the third time that the MOU had been broken by the parks with the school. Three times, two years ago, they broke it, but we didn't have any snow that year. George McNamara reaffirmed this to me the other day. They did the same thing a couple of years ago, but we had a dry winter. So no, so no harm, no foul. This past year, it didn't work that way. And then there was another time before it, I can't remember. When I came to town many years ago, I don't, I don't know if Sean, if you guys ever plowed the school. I know Ash Supply used to plow it. Ash Supply, Alan Haggard and his crew had two men all the time on that lot going as fast as they could to try to keep it clean. It's a two-man job to get the schools open during a snow event for seven o'clock. We went from ten guys to eight guys. And we went from Kathy Conway running the department to me running the department. Our department has changed in the last ten years. And then this MOU's been broken repeatedly. So I understand that it's costing the town a lot of money, the school a lot of money, but I don't see how it was really working as good as every thought. But I found out the hard way, it, it didn't work, not for us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll come back to you, Bruce, to other people. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm just, wanna speak to the Mill Street parking situation. I know there are several people that are opposed to the no parking. I've had disabilities previously and I, my, one of my family members is disabled and uses this Littleton Studio School. I know other people that are disadvantaged by the current no parking there. So I, I didn't hear you very well earlier. You're saying that there, this is gonna be continued to be addressed, how?
It's gonna be up to the select board to decide what, which way they'd like to go. If they'd like to try to pursue creating parking on Mill Street. According to the traffic ordinance, there's no left wheel to parking. The traffic, that could actually be amended. And then we'd have to do some research to see if there were any property owners willing to participate in creating some of the specifications to create ADA spaces. I, in, in reaching out to the property owners who own the sidewalk, Mill Street with the left wheel parking is, none of them have expressed interest in supplying us with an easement that would be required to create ADA. So that would be a long-term, it would take longer than just a simple, a simple, you know, motion of the board to pursue parking. Right now, parking, there is no official parking. Right now, parking, there is no official parking on Mill Street and the board is gonna decide which ways to really go.
Ralph?
Uh, two questions. The Cultural Arts Commission, is that gonna be funded by the town taxpayers or is that gonna be strictly private, have no cost to the town?
If it's, if it's a commission, I don't know that it would be appointed by the select board and be a town commission such as River District. It doesn't cost anything to have a commission.
Okay, alright. And the other question I had is on Mill Street. The zoning board, part of the zoning board, when they approved Mill Street was to make sure that that power line was put on the ground. And it's still not on the ground. Matter of fact, they've been building it up bigger and more lines coming off it. What's happening with that power line on Mill Street?
There may be a question for the planning board, the zoning board, I don't have, I don't have that agreement in front of me.
I don't know, I, I don't know if your zoning or planning is-
No, it was only board, it was the zoning board. Part of their, their, their allowance of that was that that power line would be put on the ground. And we were assured by you that it was being worked on to go on the ground, but now they're building it up even bigger, above ground. What was that?
I don't know the answer, apparently Andrew doesn't do it.
I don't either, maybe a good question for the Littleton Water and Light, but certainly do have a member to the-
No, I'm on the zoning board also and my understanding, as I'm thinking back, was the pole was the issue.
Right.
And the pole was going to be moved.
It was.
Okay, I'm not saying it hasn't, or hasn't, you know, I figured it was because I can't see it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was another study.
But I don't understand, I don't remember anything about anything being buried up there.
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to look that up again. You even told me there was a, a new power generator coming for the underground power system. Then it got taken away by Texas.
No, that, that might be a different topic.
Isn't this a question for the zoning board anyways?
Well, I don't know the answer, but we'll have Andrew look into it.
Yeah, look into that. Let it look a decision.
Look at the decision on the zoning board and see exactly what was required. Okay, that's all I've got, thank you.
Here's something else, Jerry?
No, no, that was the fucking board.
Mary, I saw you before Rudy.
Oh, okay. Two things, on the, and I commend the board for looking into and organizing the Cultural Arts Commission. And what would be the process of, of that? Will it be open, of course, to anyone who wants to apply?
Processes, we'll advertise it like we do all other commissions and we'll, if we get ten or twelve people, those ten or twelve people will get it. If we get fifty, we'll have to pick and choose.
Okay. Any criteria, how?
Criteria for commissions basically are having an interest.
Okay.
Actually residency isn't even a criteria for commission.
Then I wanna again, now, last year you had the parking meters covered, didn't you, or was I, yeah?
For Christmas, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
For the holiday season, I again wanna thank you for doing that. I think that's great to bring people down here. I have one question, I had researched, this was years ago. When the parking meters were put in nineteen forty-five, they were put in for a reason that the owners of the shops were using those spots and just kind of staying there all day. And they thought by putting in meters, it would get them to park elsewhere and then the, the parking, those who came to shop would, you know, come and stay for a while. How do you, with putting the covers on, like keep the shop owners from not parking there all day?
That'd be a question for the chief.
Well, thanks, but-
Ask it all.
I didn't wanna handle that.
There's no rule pertaining to that. I think it's a kind of, they police themselves, so to speak, and they've done it well over the past few years and-
Good.
Not being in support of the restriction on enforcing the meters for that two-week time period, I think it's really enhanced our main street as far as economically. We actually unofficially didn't enforce any meters on Black Friday either. We did parking and handicap places, disabled parking, but kind of focused our efforts elsewhere.
Rudy?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over here I got about ten emails all regarding the parking Mill Street. Just to show to them the parking Mill Street. They have about, probably about a hundred fifty signatures from people that live around and people that complain and stuff like that. Now, my question is this, I don't even live over there, I don't know why they involve me, you know, I don't, I don't understand. But I'm a voice for the town, for the taxpayer, and also for people that they can come over here to express themselves. Not that I express myself better than that, but I try very hard. Now, what I don't understand is this, why you guys, you guys received this letter over here to the settlement, okay? Did you receive this letter over here? Yes, you did. I know you did. Yeah, you did this, you did. And I don't understand one thing, why did the town doesn't really, you know, contribute just to be open to these people, explain, and talk to them without having with them? Why we gotta go all the ways in lawsuit? You know the lawsuit, to pace the lawsuit? It's us, the taxpayer. And actually, this is something that I probably, you know, you will find out. I'm right to know, we're gonna come up with the law that when somebody, it started a lawsuit against the town, doesn't sue the town, it sue the individuals. That's, maybe they have more cooperation and stuff like that. What I'm trying to say, why, you know, why we gotta, I don't understand that.
What's your question?
The question is why you guys don't get, you know, you get all these people from Mill Street and you find out what's going on and why the parking, you know, it's just on the right side and on the left side, why some people can park there, why, you know, they have special tables with some people, you know, it's, I don't, I don't understand. It's, you know, you guys gotta come up with something, not just kinda behave, you know, and talk it, talk it, talk it, and then accomplish it, you know. We go to court, everybody can go to court. But it doesn't cost you guys nothing, it costs us, taxpayers.
Aren't we taxpayers?
We, we pay the lawsuit.
Aren't we taxpayers?
I don't know about that. You are, but they're not to live it.
What is your question? Are you a taxpayer?
I try not to. I should try to not to.
Anything else? Also?
Oh, I'm just telling you to treat the people equally, okay? I've been telling you for a long time, not just you, I've been telling all the settlement end, the town manager, because, you know, it's a lawsuit, you guys are not gonna win any lawsuit, that's for sure.
Thank you. Bruce, you have something else? Yeah, going back to it, I, I also felt that it shouldn't necessarily be the you people, because you do have three park commissioners and these park commissioners need to understand this is costing us a lot of money. And they need to be very involved with it and suddenly running a business rather than playing, playing volleyball type of a thing on it. They are there for a particular reason, but it also has an effect on the money aspect of it too. So it's not just really here, it's the street commissioners that need to really get a handle on what's going on on this thing on it as well. That's, that was number one. The other thing that I wanted to ask about on your snowplowing out of it, is a town legally held responsible for lawsuits if the sidewalks are not maintained or put on it or salted out of the thing on it? You, you probably don't know it, could you find that out? I'd like to know. We can ask. Yeah, we would like, I would like to have that answer out of it. We'll have to engage council to ask. Yes, yeah. Actually, we may not, we, our insurance carrier maybe will answer the question at no charge. I'm earning my-
You're gonna get a raise. Yeah, I know we've had a issue in the past where someone was injured on the sidewalk and we had-
But we'll look into it. The reason why I'm asking is that there's a, there's a law on the books and they can't draw it, Con Dodge knows it and a lot of the other snowplow people do too, that if you hire a credited snowplow operator to plow snow out of the thing on it and he's been to a class, you can sue the snowplow operator as far as the company or the person that's doing it and it also protects the owner of the property. And what you should be doing is sending somebody to the state, I think the last class they have this year is something like on December fifth, but they should be going to that and if you do that, then it would limit your liability pertaining to it under the laws if, if, if the no parking is exempt out of the thing on it. Consequently, if they're not, you should be sending somebody to that class because if you have somebody that's done it, you've protected your community out of it from any lawsuits out of it. And it would be the same way if you were hiring somebody as a snowplow operator, but the individuals who own the property, if they hire somebody that's got that, I call them, whatever it is, they can't sue under the laws out of it from that point. And you should be looking into that. Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name's John Sroker, I own a business on Mill Street and I'm here for that case and I think the select board should still look into the parking situation down there because, so that constitutes like two percent of the parking in the area.
Two, two and a half.
Yeah, so Littleton needs all the parking it can get. The other thing that my concern is, is just like the studio school, is the handicap situation. Like for my business, there's no suitable handicap parking, you know, within a couple hundred yards of my business. And also the, beside, besides the, the parking in the summer, I ended up one day parking behind the fairs to get to my business because all the spots were gone, so I'm sure Littleton needs as many as possible. And even like in that sort of situation, if it's a, if it's a business concern with trucks coming in and everything else, I've seen other towns in New Hampshire that have Saturday, Sunday parking when there's usually not, you know, so Monday through Friday, there'd be no parking down there, so trucks can get in and whatnot, but on the weekends you open it up for, for parking for tourists and whatnot. And the other thing with parking is just in the winter, it's, I have landed on my backside multiple times getting down there, parking up from behind the, the movie theater or open air, it's, it's not pedestrian friendly, so any sort of parking down there would be a lot safer also.
So you're advocating reinstituting parking?
It, it should be looked into a little bit more.
Well, we're gonna have to look into it, as Andrew explained, never having had legal parking there, we're gonna have to amend the ordinance and if we do that, then we have to provide for disability parking, so it's, it's not as easy as a bang of the gavel and we're done, but it's one of the considerations. Thank you for your comments.
I have, I have a couple of things. You would have to allow for the handicap parking. I'm a resident at forty-two Mill Street on the upper floor, so if I don't have access to ambulance service and fire service, you're putting me in jeopardy as well.
Yep.
So as a resident.
You're right.
So I feel like that needs to be open and unimpeded for, for that property, my property, not only my property, but all the other properties that feed into that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah?
I definitely advocate for parking on that road too because I'm, I'm shopping often on that road, but I also go to Schilling. Now with, with that building, that Schilling's built, that's gotten rid of a lot of parking for people, so I don't see why it would be a bad thing to, to put parking. And I don't know how people would get down otherwise because those two hills going back up to Main Street are really steep and you've got the inkwell now, you've got the loading dock, Bad Art, whatever's at this, Studio School, it's just a great area. I call it artist's alley, it's just a fantastic area and we need parking there.
I see it Bruce, I'll get back to you. Jim?
Yeah, I, I think the challenge with parking there is that the width of that road never anticipated pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic, deliveries and parking. And the parking impedes the flow of trucks and life safety vehicles, it's just not a item. And that's to Brenda's point, is that there are parking issues every day, there, there are with, you know, access issues every day when it's, when it's deliveries, it's not for everyone down there, but if it's for a fire truck or a life safety truck, then that's, that's much more impactful.
Thank you, John. Yes, sir.
Can I just say that even just as a, for instance, the, when Schilling's caught on fire, they did have trucks get down there, they blocked off the road and there was absolutely no problem with that.
I see Bruce, anybody else? Bruce? Uh, I wanna talk about your history in the town, which is, I'm not going against Schilling's or anything like this, but I believe what they did when they granted this permit to be able to build this building down here, when I sold my property on the main street, I sold it to Ned Densmore. One of the requirements was on, for Ned Densmore to build that building, he had to go off street and buy parking someplace else. He had, he went up to Clay Street and bought a lot up there, so that, that's what he had to do. And that's what the town of Littleton should be doing for anybody. It's water over the dam now with Schilling's, but it should be put in and all, anybody that is gonna try to build something in that magnitude, if they don't provide the parking, they oughta have to go off premises and buy something out of the thing on it. And that's what Ned Densmore had to do, he went up to Clay Street and bought a lot, actually. I used to own that lot one time too, but I had sold it to somebody else. So what you're saying is that the zoning board, when they granted the- That's right. The exceptions for Schilling should have put a condition- That's exactly right. And I'm trying to say it because of the fact that it's happened before and I don't think that they did it and I don't think they looked at it and I think they made a mistake, frankly. I suspect there will be more development in that area and it'd be something for the zoning board to keep in- That's right. Keep in mind. Thank you. Jim?
Sorry, just go, at that meeting, the zoning board felt that what, the parking wasn't an issue for the zoning board, it was for the select, and I think they're saying it wasn't specific.
After the fact anyway.
Yeah, I, I know, I just wanted to clarify that.
Jim?
Member of the zoning board, we did discuss it. We did ask for input or a letter or something to what the impacts were gonna be if the parking was kept or removed. The other thing is the parking ordinance was voted out in ninety-nine, so it might be good to take a look at that, see what could be revised and-
Or we're gonna have to anyway.
Well, it's not in place right now, so.
Anyone else, any public input? If not, we're going to go into board action. The first thing under board action was the creation of the Emergency Medical Service Advisement Committee, did I get that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
I think we simply need a motion to establish this committee and we will then advertise and seek committee members. How the motion, do I have a second? Further discussion. All those in favor? Alright, it's three to nothing? Chairman? I know you're doing it, but- Go ahead. I, I made a call to the people that were supplying you with the stuff, this was probably six months to a year ago. And what I found out was that part of the cost in turn was how Mr. Brox in turn was demanding what they had on the ambulance, not just the fact that they had to have the E I, EMTs. He demanded they have something beyond that and the cost in turn was adding to that cost was because they almost had to have a privilege of a doctor onboard at times. And consequently, I think you jumped over the gun and could keep that cost down on some of it if by having just the EMTs without having to have that extra person, because that's what they were complaining about on, when I talked to them, they were complaining about it because it was costing a lot of money on their behalf to have to have somebody out there to do that.
My understanding, speaking at the board, the board doesn't have anything to say about the staffing arrangements, it's, it's under the law. So, and I'm not sure if we're talking federal law or if we're talking state law, but if you have a, a serious heart condition and you have to be transported, let's say to Concord, there has to be someone on board who's trained to deal with-
there has to be someone on board who's trained to deal with you. If you have a cancer situation and you're near the end of, of your lifespan and they're trying to get you down somewhere, the staffing is dependent on the condition. And that's where they run in, you know, that's where these ambulance services in rural areas run into problems in terms of being able to pull people in. So they have staff that are highly trained, and they have to pay them accordingly. And they don't always use them. And again, it's a very vicious market from the standpoint of working either.
I was only told from these people as to why the costs were prohibited as to what was to be demanded. And they used you as the example out of it, of what you demanded of this on board.
I make a lot of mistakes, but that's not one I make. I understand those, but it, but it, what they're facing is, is this requirement that staffing has to be.
These issues for the committee to discuss.
Eastern credit committee, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Culture arts commission. And I think we, all we need to do is vote to create that. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to nothing.
I think that's a great, I think you should send a discussion, but I think that's a great idea.
I do too.
I'm pleased to see that.
Three is the Mill Street. Mill Street, we have several choices. We can leave it no parking. We can try to institute parking, which will mean we have to change our parking ordinance and we have to create ADA. Or we can do a third choice. And let the North Country Council finish their study on it and give us a recommendation on what to do. Apparently, the study's in process, isn't it?
They're just starting.
Yeah.
We were waiting for the federal allocation.
That study's addressing parking townwide or villagewide.
Yeah, villagewide, yeah.
So what's their timeframe?
So we really only have, that's gonna happen one way or the other. So we really have two choices, either.
I don't think it'll be done before the winter.
Have no parking, I mean, for the time being.
Okay.
No parking or.
That's, you're right, that's study of, just, our decision won't stop them.
Yeah.
If, if we don't do it. So I think we need to decide whether we want to try to reinstitute parking, which means we gotta get in and change the parking ordinance to make it legal. And part of that would then be having to create an ADA spot. Or leave it no parking.
And I'm assuming there's a formula, if you have five parking spaces or seven parking spaces, you're gonna have.
Andrew said that we create one ADA spot.
For how many parking, parking spaces?
I don't know the total. This is the initial information that we found while doing the research. We have to finalize that illegal. And if, if parking was pursued, it would likely be some kind of a hybrid of no parking areas. I think in the past, it was really just anybody could park anywhere. But, or to avoid it, you could do.
It just seems like the, between the challenges of the ADA and getting the easements we need, and the fact that that TAP is in process, it just seems to me it makes more sense to leave it no parking now and address it as a whole, and readdress the parking issues.
It's, the Mill Street area is so difficult to think about in terms of having parking as well as pedestrian safety. Because that was one of the issues that, that came up was pedestrian safety. I remember one night when Schilling's was having a, and I don't wanna pick on Schilling's, but there was an event going on down there. And going back to your concern, there were cars parked, a lot of modest state cars, because these were tourists that were in town, they were parked on both sides of the road. And you could barely walk through, let alone get a, get an ambulance or a fire truck through. So on the other hand, there's a sense that because of the businesses down there, a certain number of parking spaces may not be a bad idea. As long as you're not compromising pedestrian safety in the process. And the ability to get emergency vehicles down there. And we're talking about a postage stamp situation here. It's, I would really need more inform, I, I tend to favor having some parking down there. But on the other hand, it's, you know, looking at that area, it's just a very tough situation. We've talked in the past about parking garage. You can't go over three stories, and who wants to see one?
It's not a sleuth to put this way.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a very tough situation.
It might come out of the study at some point, but.
Well, look, I'm generally in favor of trying to figure out how to get parking there too. I just don't think we can do it tonight. And I think the challenges of the ADA and all that stuff are making nearly impossible for us to get that accomplished this season.
Well, that's why the question regarding their timeframe. I mean, if they're looking at parking throughout Littleton, you're dealing with more than just Mill Street. And I know many of the merchants on Mill Street really are not as concerned with the parking as they are with pedestrian safety in, in that part of town, or in that part of that neighborhood, so.
Well, they're also concerned with the flow of traffic through.
Right.
Parking, with deliveries on top of it, stops that flow.
Right.
For various periods of time.
There's, there's, even if there was some parking, there's a control issue in terms of monitoring that on weekends, which then stretches the police a little bit further. That night, when there were cars up parked on both sides and there was no way to get through, ultimately, it got broken up and taken care of by, by the police officers. But it almost implies, because of the small amount of area we're talking about, there's some ongoing monitoring.
Well, I'd say.
So, but it doesn't help anything, but it's just another part of it.
What's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we designate that area as no parking pending the TAP study.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, three to nothing. Transfer station new hours. As per the chart, is there a motion?
We might actually have to approve this hours of the transfer station?
Apparently.
You don't really, but it.
I make a motion, we accept the transfer station hours as posted.
Second.
You really just.
Further discussion? All those in favor? The public works wonder and inclement weather policy as amended by Milt. Is there a motion to accept that?
Some move.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to nothing. The appointment of Penny Zach McKinnon to the Littleton Dump Park Committee, is there a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, is the meter bagging from twelve sixteen to January second, is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. I have no idea how much money we take in, I probably should, but I don't have the budget in front of me, how much money we take in from that. I just, in general, wonder if it's, if it, if we think it's beneficial that there's free parking for business reasons during the holidays, why isn't that beneficial year-round? I don't, I'm, I'm not sure, should, shouldn't we be looking at that? I have no idea what the cost implications are, but just logic tells me if it's good for business, it's good for business.
I think it's a tremendous question. No parking meters in North Conway. What's that tell you? It tells me there's a different mindset out there.
St. John'sbury, I know we moved theirs, but it might not be side of the pan.
I don't think that's a question for time, but I think it's a good question.
Yeah, maybe something.
Well, I guess what I would like to.
We can talk on Main Street.
Yeah, well, he's a fellow numbers.
Just to answer a couple, one comment, first of all, can you amend, could you amend your motion to include all metered parking, not just Main Street? So that would include community center as well as Mill Street? Anyplace that we have metered parking, I think that would be better. The, they introduced this a few years ago to kinda during the low point of the recession to help merchants on Main Street during the holiday season. That's why they do it during the, the two-week time period. There is a lot of revenue that does come out of the meters and, and parking tickets. And it's used to, and specifically when the warrant article was created, it was to develop parking as well as pay for, uh, pay for some of the sidewalk maintenance and other maintenance issues. So the monies, there is a benefit to those, to those monies, and I don't know how they do it in North Conway or anywhere else. But I don't think North Conway's built the same way as Littleton is as far as its downtown area and, and the district. So maybe that's another thing you gotta look at, is why you don't see it there and why you do see it in Littleton. But I think Mary answered the question earlier. From the research that I did on the, the warrant, it was for that rotation. So people wouldn't park in front of their competitor's business or, or other businesses all day. That's why they did it. Regardless, we'll do whatever the board elects to do as far as enforcement. But just another thing you might wanna consider when you redo your, when we address the ordinance and change, make some changes, perhaps you might wanna just make it a, a permanent from this date. Or this, during this time period annually, parking will be free, and then you don't have to vote on it each year. There's certainly something that you can do.
Okay.
Or not do at all.
I'd like to, I, I think it's worth looking into. I don't have a, I don't have a position on it right now, I just, it just got me to thinking.
Let's do two things. Let's deal with this bagging of the meters townwide on those dates.
So I make a motion, we amend that to all parking meters.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
How do you think about creating another commission? To study the idea of parking meters versus not?
Maybe we, because we're already starting the process with North Country Council.
Make it part of that TAP.
Maybe we'll take a look at that and see, you know, what kind of impact that would have.
That concludes.
I think we have to still accept the original motion, right?
Yes. Oh, okay, that was only amendment. So the original motion is to bag the meters on those dates.
So.
Yeah.
Or did you have a motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed, three to nothing. Okay, we're not quite done. We've got some minutes to approve. We have August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I don't have touch up to that.
I have a, I have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Um, now?
On the August fourteenth minutes.
Go ahead.
Under the health officer report, right at the bottom, I was talking about the bear proofing of our dumpsters. And I had checked with a number of other communities that have an ordinance. And one of the, one of my questions was, how much resistance is there among the people in town regarding bear proofing and not feeding bears? And I, there's just a sentence left off of here, and I'm not exactly sure how it should be read. But people in two of these communities began to adhere to the bear proofing ordinance when they, when they were told that mother bears and baby bears, or cubs, were being put down because they were eating out of the dumpsters. The issue is that mother bears and cubs get used to being around humans, and they get used to eating our scraps. So it says the mother bears and cubs then have to be put down, which was a major reason why people began to adhere to the, to the ordinance. I, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what I said, but there was a reason why I, I went to the, to the recommend, to the example given to me by two different town managers as to why there was resistance initially. And then finally, people said, we don't wanna see mama bear and cubs being shot because they pose a separate danger later on because they, they revisit neighborhoods. So however, I, I don't remember my original wording, but there was a reason why I cited it. It was, it was a way for town residents to say, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna adhere to this ordinance. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
So do we approve these or not?
Are you changing what we're recording?
Yeah, well, I'm adding a sentence, but I'm, I'm asked, and it has to do with this being a reason why communities began to adhere to the bear ordinances. Because the, the consequences here were, were dire.
So you're just adding that sentence to the end of the?
Right, right.
Is there a motion to approve the edited minutes?
Some move.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to September eleventh.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got one comment.
I got a correction.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Bottom of page three, under new business, public comments. Last sentence, we've got too many knots in there. Sweet said part of his thinking is not all the budget committees and the board of selectmen and the school board will not be attended. No, that's correct, excuse me. Um, you hit something?
I do. On the first section, under Aaron Hennessy's presentation, somewhere in the middle, it says Keanu Kindergarten. I think that's supposed to be Keno.
Yeah.
Okay. There's two places there, and that paragraph should be Keno.
Okay, good. Is there a motion to accept September eleventh with the edits?
Some move.
Second?
All those in favor? And lastly, we have October tenth.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Further discussion? All those in favor? All right. That completes our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the meeting? This gentleman was first.
Um, I wanted to talk about the parking, specifically this parking here. Since the town put the meters in, it's created a dominant effect. The courthouse doesn't have any parking. The post office, it's got no parking. The church has no parking, and the library has no parking. So they put meters here, where do all these people go? Park on School Street. Now they can't park there. Taking all of this parking away is just making the situation with parking worse. Now the same thing's happening on Mill Street you were just talking about. There was parking there, that's gonna work. If you keep taking parking away, you're taking away business and you're hurting the town.
So by taking, by putting meters in here, you're saying you're taking parking away?
Where did all the people from the park, the courthouse park before?
Here.
So now they gotta pay forty dollars a month for parking? But you can't. Or say, a server at one of the restaurants wants to park in this parking lot. It's only for four hours. If they're for a six or seven hour or eight hour shift, they gotta run out in the middle of it to feed the meters? It's just not.
I said it all about right here. The, this parking isn't owned by the town. This is private parking that is owned by the community house, which is a separate nonprofit.
So who gets the money to put the meters in?
So what, so what transpired was the community house expressed displeasure with what you're talking about, how people would just come in and park here and take over the parking lot. And they approached us and we developed an M O U where basically they said, okay, we're, we want you to take over the front part of this parking lot. And a way to enforce or keep, um, keep cars moving in and out is to meter them. Now, the back part of the parking lot is something that still is under private control still. I mean, the whole lot is owned by the community house. But they don't like anyone parking back there either. Because what happens is they end up in a situation where they're holding an event or they're leasing this space, and the people who come here don't have anywhere to park. I think they would have, if you, if you spoke to the community house group, you, you might wanna come to one of their meetings and bring that up. But they, I don't know if they'd be open to talking with you about leasing some space to, you know, some of these other entities. But this was done as part of a M O U between the community house and the, the town, so.
So the community house owns both these parking lots?
That's correct.
And who plows it?
That's part of the M O U. So we take care of that.
Yeah, but they've been plowing it since before the meters were in there. This is, why is the town plowing this if this is privately held? Why are the taxpayers paying for that?
It's part of an agreement between the town and the community house.
So is there an agreement with every church in town too? Do you do the churches? They're not brought.
We don't do churches, and recently, we stopped doing the school, which some people see one way, some see another, so.
I think, you know, what, recognize there's a. I think, you know, recognize there's a parking issue and we're in town. And we're trying to haphazardly deal with specific concerns and issues and, you know, pinch points and danger. I don't think anybody thinks that we've got a really good parking solution right now. And that's part of why that, why that TAP study is gonna be so important. So right now, we don't have a lot of choices. We just don't, if we're gonna address the problems.
Well, you just have to think of what your actions create. So losing the parking...
Well, your question, your question is, your question presumes that we don't think about it.
Parking, now that's gone.
Your question presumes you don't think about it. We gotta make choices. Every time, every time someone disagrees with a choice we make, their initial reaction is often, we obviously aren't thinking about it. The fact that we disagree doesn't mean we don't think about it. We just disagree. We've gotta deal with an issue. And we're, so we're trying to deal with it. That's why we do other things, like try to commission that study to get the problem dealt with. We don't just do things and not think, you know, without thought. We can disagree with it, but please don't tell me I don't think about it. I'm tired of hearing that. And I've only been in selectmen for a few months.
To Mr. Rossi's point, we waited a whole year before we put the signs up after the selectmen acted on that last year. So I thought about it even longer than everybody else thought about it. So to Mr. Rossi's point, we think about it a lot. Like, you don't, men don't agree with it all the time. But that was acted on, we already talked about this earlier. That was acted on last November. And I waited a whole year. That was acted on by the board a year ago. And I waited a year to act on their decision.
The reason that we lost the parking on School Street, which we need, the library's got, what, four spots? Where, so I have to chase the mom with three kids in tow on Family Reading Day out of our parking lot because I need to reserve it for the paying tenants? No, I'm not gonna do that. Where do the library employees park now? That's where they park. It was never an issue until you took this away. Then that created an issue there and you took that away.
Well, it was never an issue for you, but it was an issue for someone. This was done for a reason.
It was, there were issues regarding the school buses safely coming down the hill during the winter.
Why can't the school buses take a left or right and go down Elm? Or go down Pleasant? Or go down Church? Or go down Jackson? You said it, go down that way.
It certainly helps you, but it doesn't help people on those other streets. We happen to have our schools up on a hill. Therefore, and we happen to have icy roads. And this is, and this is the route they take. You may remember the day that one of the buses came down here and went right into a store because she lost control of her brakes. So this is not a good situation for us regardless. But in point of fact, it was a safety issue with bringing the kids down School Street. I can't answer the question as to why they couldn't change it, but it doesn't matter because other streets pose the same risk for these buses. The streets are not wide enough. The streets weren't planned for the type of traffic we have today, nor the size of the buses we have today. So the reason this was done was a safety reason and it was primarily just during certain months of the year. There's another element here as to why this building and this parking lot, we ultimately metered it. And it had something to do with our budget.
It was something to do with the MOU and a way to capture some revenue, yeah.
Because potentially, they could have shut this parking lot down. Period. And not let anybody park here unless, you know, they're using the building for some reason. So this was a way to address that issue.
Can the parking meters be changed to eight hours? Maybe that would help.
Well, I think...
I think that's been discussed.
I think there's some, some problems and some issues. And I think you certainly hit your points, Wayne. And I think that we got a TAP study going on, but I think we need to take a look at the whole situation from top to bottom. And we may get the TAP study and take those findings into our own commission and study and let everybody weigh in. Wayne's certainly got his points. There are opposing points. And at some point in time, hear them all out and majority rules.
And just one point of clarification. The TAP is the pedestrian and then the project and then the North Country Council is the parking.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay, yeah, but there's a lot of letters. Yeah.
I think Rudy had his hand up.
Mr. Chairman, just one, just a little question. Do you guys approve the minutes in the River District? No, it's got nothing to do with you guys?
We appointed River District Commissioners. We do not approve their minutes.
You don't approve the minutes? But do you know what's going on with that?
I know what's going on from my reports and my meetings from the town manager.
That's what I'm trying to say. You listen to the report, right?
From the town manager.
From the town manager. And then you come up with a solution.
If there's a problem, yeah.
If there's a problem. I've got a lot of stuff over here, but I don't really wanna take your time. Stuff like that, not to just say, you know, I'm thinking. Then I can ask the town manager?
You what?
I can ask the town manager some question?
Not right now.
No way now?
No. We're long done with public input. Mary.
Just something, I think, for the future in the parking. I think his points are good. One thing in history, when that building was built, I do believe it was passed and given the parking that they had, but there were not enough space there for the amount that that building would need. But yet it was passed. So might say, just like the Shillings, you know, parking considered that was gonna be needed. If anything else is done within this town of building,[1745.64]